This regular meeting, North Little Rock City Council order.
Ms. Whitby, you want to call the roll, please?
Yes, sir Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Yeah.
Robinson.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Baggett.
Here.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
McCormick is present, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. Can we stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Baggett, followed by the pledge by Alderman Gaines? Back your heads, please.
Father, we thank you for this time together tonight when we can come together and make decisions for the city of North Little Rock and our community. Father, be with us, help us make good decisions, godly decisions, be with those that are sick tonight and couldn't be here. We thank you and praise you in Jesus's name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second. Motion made and second amendment to the previous meeting be approved as submitted. On the motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. I've got a couple of acknowledgements and presentations, and I'm going to ask while I comment on them if Alderman, you know, two of our Aldermen, Witcher and Robinson, could go down to the platform and assist.
Taylor.
Taylor.
And Taylor, okay. To go down to the platform and assist. I was called on Alderman, well, of course, I guess it's certainly of wisdom because, you know, our two council members are covering a good part of their district, I think, a big part of Richard Carroll and Tracy Steele, both are representing Senator Richard. Do I see you? I know I see Tracy. Yeah, right there, okay. If y'all would rise and come to the platform, let me just acknowledge the last session of our General Assembly in the Senate, Senator Steele, Tracy Steele, Tracy's been representing us for a number of years, and Richard Carroll. Richard, you know, is concluding or concluded his first term as a representative for a good section of Ward Two. And annually, the Arkansas Municipal League at its regular convention in Hot Springs acknowledges the contribution and support of not all by any means, but certain legislators who exemplify their duties as it relates to municipalities. And both Senator Steele and Representative Carroll were acknowledged at the Municipal League in Hot Springs Annual Meeting. They're just finding out what we've known all along, and that certainly with Representative, or certainly with Senator Steele, as well as now we're learning from Representative Carroll, you know, how much we are benefited and appreciate their diligent, tireless, and ongoing efforts as now we go into annual sessions. So, you know, we're looking forward to next year as we see our first session on an annual basis, and we appreciate both of you and underline, you know, this acknowledgement from the Arkansas Municipal League throughout the state, but particularly as it relates to North Little Rock and your community. So, I'm going to ask all of them before, you know, our two council members might make any comments, but present those plaques to you and certainly read what's on the plaques, join me in thanking our two, two of our members of the delegation to the Arkansas General Assembly.
The plaque says, "The Arkansas Municipal League Distinguished Legislator Award. In honor of those who demonstrated exemplary service that benefited cities and towns of Arkansas, is hereby bestowed upon Honorable Tracy Steele, State Senator, presented at the Seventy-Fifth Annual Convention, Arkansas Municipal League, June Seventeenth, Two Thousand Nine." It says the same thing. Okay. "The Arkansas Municipal League Distinguished Legislator Award, in honor of those who demonstrated exemplary service that benefited cities and towns of Arkansas, is hereby bestowed upon Honorable Richard Carroll, State Representative, presented at the Seventy-Fifth Annual Convention, Arkansas Municipal League, June Seventeenth, Two Thousand Nine."
Okay.
You gentlemen, either one of you care to say anything?
Mayor, Council, let me thank you for interrupting. I know what's going to be a very busy schedule and acknowledging our work in the Arkansas General Assembly. You know, state government may be a little different because we choose our committees, and each year I've had the opportunity, I've chose to be on city, county, and local committee. That's where most of the Municipal League policies and legislations come to, and it's been an honor for me to serve. And I chose, choose that committee because I care deeply about what happens in my city, all my cities that I represent, but particularly my home city here in North Little Rock, and our county. What happens in the work you do that we can support from the state is critically important to me, and it always has been, so I am honored to receive this. I didn't expect it, and I appreciate that. I didn't know that all the cameras going to be, cameras was going to be here while we received this award tonight, Mayor, but...
They have a good reason to be here. We appreciate y'all showing up.
It's an honor, and again, we do appreciate your service. You know, we're in for a session, and we have a lot of meetings, but it never stops for you, so I really respect you making the commitment to be public servants. Thank you again.
Thank you, Senator.
Mayor, council members, I appreciate this award that the Municipal League has bestowed on me, and also, as the Senator said, tireless work that y'all do. I've watched y'all several times. You're here, you're always diligently working at trying to better your community, and with that example, that's sort of the example that I followed at the state level. I tried to resemble what I heard and felt from the council here over at the State House, and I also appreciate this by the election that I was, won this race and was elected by the citizens of this district. I appreciate them giving me the chance to represent them at the state capitol. Thank you.
We appreciate you helping us. Thank you. Could we go, and again, those gentlemen are going to have double duty as we go into annual session, so we sure appreciate your continued involvement in assisting this community as well as communities all across the state by your advocacy of municipal issues. Thank you. Communications, do I have a blanket motion?
So move.
Any council member want to pull one?
Number three.
Number three. I want to point out that number seven is requesting an authorization, I assume, by not, well, let's just go ahead and pull that so we can act on it separately. So, three and seven will be pulled. That means one, three, four, five, and six. One, two, four, five, and six. On the motion?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Number three, do you want it read or by title?
Read it, please.
This is a letter dated August fifteenth, Two Thousand Nine, to Bill Yates, from Alan Tatkowski, Secretary and Treasurer. It's regarding, Secretary and Treasurer for the North Little Rock Firefighters, I A F F, Local Number Thirty-Five. It's regarding endorsement for the location of the new Soldiers Memorial. Mr. Yates, International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Thirty-Five. North Little Rock has given careful review of the possible locations for the North Little Rock Memorial honoring the soldiers of these United States. It is the opinion of Local Thirty-Five that the location at Fifty-Five-O-One MacArthur is best suited for this memorial. A major consideration for this opinion is that Military Drive is the primary gateway to Camp Robinson. At the regular local meeting on August third, the membership voted unanimously to support this location. Please consider this letter or endorsement of Fifty-Five-O-One MacArthur as the location for the memorial. If you have any question, any further questions or concerns for us in this regard, please contact us at your soonest convenience fraternally, Alan D. Tatkowski, Secretary, I A F F, Local Thirty-Five.
Thank you.
Did we pull number four?
No, but we might as well balance it out, so read number four, even though we already...
Can we get a motion and a second and a vote?
Yeah.
So move.
Second, accept and file.
Baggett.
Ross.
Yes.
White. Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Anyway, so we don't do it out of order. I'm going to go ahead and have, ask that four be read, but let's go ahead and deal with seven. Would you read it by title?
Yes, sir, number seven.
It is a memorandum from Joe Smith, Director of Commerce and Government Affairs. It's regarding the RV Park.
Let me, could I have a motion to accept and file?
So move.
Explain it. Essentially, I know that there's been some discussion about the RV Park, so I didn't want anything happening out there that the council wasn't aware of and authorized. You know, I think this memo, which is number seven, underlines really the success so far with little effort on the part of promotion in terms of, you know, letting folks know that, you know, I think we already have had over, you know, our close to seventy thousand dollars in income, are, you know, I'm not sure exactly what the expenses are, but I think we're already in the black for this year, you know, with, you know, the biggest part of the year to go, and, you know, things like Razor Rock and, you know, other activities, Smoke on the River next year, and... Convention coming in that are very confident that, you know, that we'll make our debt service plus some, and payback will even be quicker as we, you know, this become more known. You know, there is sufficient funds in riverfront development on the capital side, and so essentially this says, you know, or seeks the council, okay, you know, even though from a legal standpoint we didn't need to do this, we like to work, obviously, and keep everybody informed, so it's, rest assured, if the council doesn't authorize this, we won't do it. But, you know, the money's in the budget, the capital accounts there, and this simply indicates that we'd like to build some roads out there and seeking council's authorization to do that. So, with your accepting and filing of this, you know, we're going to go forward with building those roads. Any questions, discussion? The motion to accept and file and authorize, as I weigh, I'm going to take it. Any further discussion on the motion, then?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
All right, now, I know it wasn't part of our original motion, but just to balance things out, since three was read, let's read four.
Number four is a letter dated August eighteenth, Two Thousand Nine, to members of the city council regarding the site for the Veterans Memorial. I want to register my strong objection to the city contributing any money to build the proposed monument at the property of my friend's place, Bar and Grill, at the intersection of MacArthur Drive and Military Road. I think it would be insulting to the men and women who serve in our armed forces to place their monument on the parking lot of a beer joint where there are so many other, there are so many other more desirable location, or sites with ample parking. If Mr. Yates wants to do this with his own funds or can raise private funds, so be it, but I do not want city money to be used for it at that location. Sincerely, Andy F. Aldrich.
We've already accepted and filed, so really, there's no motion needed on that. Can we go on to public hearings?
Yes, sir.
And with that, I note, let me, let me mention how I'm going to go forward with the first public hearing. You know, I'd indicated to the last council member that it was my intent to call for a vote, and I guess in some respects, you know, that could be synonymous with disposal in Oh-Nine-Forty-Eight, which is the first public hearing. You know, I'm going to, and I know there's several that have signed up for it, and I'm still going to, you know, obviously offer the microphone to those that are here. But before I, you know, give the direction of what I've decided on this legislation, I'd like to make sure that we all know what we're talking about. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Whitby to read the operative legislation. We don't need to worry about the whereas clauses, but just read, you know, the legislation itself, if you have it in front of you, and let's all be real clear about what this legislation actually said that would do to the codes of our code. Ms. Whitby?
So you want the title and the sections only?
Just harassment of persons, you know, as amended.
Okay. This is Oh-O-Nine-Forty-Eight, An Ordinance Amending North Little Rock Municipal Code to Add a Section Making Harassment of Persons Traveling Across City Rights of Way, Misdemeanor Offense. And then in the section, Section One, that the North Little Rock Municipal Code is hereby amended to add the following section, Section Sixty-Six, One Thirty-Six, harassment of persons traveling across city rights of way. It is unlawful to taunt, threaten, or otherwise harass a person traveling across the city right-of-way. Such actions include, A knowingly throw an object at or in the direction of a person traveling across the city right-of-way; B make a threat for the purpose of frightening or disturbing a person traveling across any city right-of-way; C sound a horn, shout, or otherwise direct sound toward a person traveling across any city right-of-way for the sole purpose of frightening or disturbing the person traveling across any city right-of-way; D knowingly place a person traveling across any city right-of-way in apprehension of immediate physical injury or engage in conduct that creates a risk of death or serious physical injury to a person traveling across the city right-of-way. Person who violates the provisions of this section is guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction shall be fined not less than two hundred and fifty dollars nor more than a thousand dollars. And then, Section Two, they're all ordinances or parts thereof, et cetera.
Let me, and our city attorney can comment on this. What this seems to have taken on an aura over the last several council meetings of, we'll say, hitting users of the right-of-way, you know, against each other, maybe too strong, but certainly recalling instances where, you know, one has maybe taken advantage of the other in the way they use the right-of-way, you know, whether it be a cyclist, you know, running a stoplight, or whether it be a motorist coming too close and shouting, or I mean, even heard some people throwing objects, you know. The one thing I think that's obvious, and I guess this was one of the prime reasons that I moved this legislation forward, is that, you know, anytime, you know, a four-wheel motor vehicle tangles with a two-wheel, whether it be a motorcycle, or a bicycle, or a pedestrian, in all likelihood, you know, the four-wheel vehicle is going to come out better. And, and so, you know, my major concern is we increase our uses of right-of-way by those who are more likely to be injured or hurt. I want them to know the rules of the road, as well as those others to know that the road is being used and have rights to be used by them. But as you've heard me say at pretty much every council meeting, and we've talked about this, where their rights are responsibilities. And, and what this has gotten to, and it may be a little bit of what might have gone on in Missouri, and I certainly thank, you know, Alderwoman Ross for exploring that, you know, it's maybe been a little bit more disruptive than constructive, and, and that's the last thing that I want to do, or ever had any intention to do. And so, at this point, you know, and let me just ask another question. Mr. City Attorney, you and I hadn't had a chance to talk about this, but I know some of this language that's in my amendment with your help is basically the same thing as on the books for an assault. You know, assault, I mean, assault is, you know, is an allegation of threat to put somebody in immediate, you know, worry of their physical harm. I'm pretty sure, I hadn't checked the statutes just lately, but I'm pretty sure that that's a criminal violation punishable by, you know, fine and/or perhaps imprisonment. That's true. The verbiage is very similar. Very similar, and the only one that I had little concern about whether that was an assault is sub-paragraph C, and that's a much more serious offense, you know, than what this legislation would entail. So, it's my belief, you know, that most of what is here is already covered, you know, and, and again, my, my desire was simply to raise the consciousness of people as we move into, I think, an ever-increasing likelihood of more and more people using our urban right-of-ways, you know, in a way that they're legally entitled to under state law, and I frankly would defend. I mean, I'm not trying to put it off on state law as being, you know, the cop-out, because I agree with state law, and I agree with that, that more likelihood of people, both pedestrians and non-motorized, you know, vehicles using our rights-of-way. It's just my desire that we all learn about it. And for that reason, the last thing I want to do is cause a vote that may or may not pass this legislation. That's not nearly the important thing, because again, I think there are legislation on the book that is actually more serious of offense for, if not all, most of what is enumerated in this legislation. So, it's my intent, you know, to pull this down, to not do, you know, not ask for a vote on this, but to certainly indicate to the council and the community, you know, that whether I refer it for study by a bicycle-friendly, you know, group, or whether, you know, I, you know, look at other directions, the rest assured, I've already visited with Chief Bradley. We've discussed what education that we might have in terms of sharing with non-motorized bicyclists and others that use our right-of-ways, more of their responsibilities. I mean, I don't intend to not do anything that I was not planning on doing in terms of education in the beginning, but, you know, I certainly don't want people to vote yea or nay on what I think is some misperception out there, and even in fact may very well be covered by a much more serious offense that is criminally sanctioned and is already on the books. So, you know, and, and those that have signed up are certainly welcome to come comment, but I'm going to pull this legislation down, and, and we're going to, you know, work at it, you know, continue to work at it as far as I'm concerned, you know, from an educational standpoint. I want to acknowledge, you know, to all folks out there, you know, that what is worded in here, to me, is covered by much more serious criminal action already, if not all of it, most of it. So, if somebody throws something at a, anybody, whether it be a cyclist or pedestrian throwing a rock at a car, which I know sometimes occurs, or vice versa, you know, don't hesitate to come and let us know, or at least the prosecuting attorney's office know, because they'll issue an affidavit, you'll sign an affidavit, and they'll issue a warrant. So, you know, by me pulling this down, please don't think that the offenses that are enumerated here are not punishable, and that if somebody's aggrieved, they ought to go to the proper authorities and share that with them, and certain action will be taken, you know, as far as, as most of the acts that are complained of in this legislation. So, with that, you know, I'm going to go ahead and just indicate right up front, and, you know, we'll, you know, we'll go ahead and call the legislation, and I'll, you know, withdraw it, you know, for, you know, whatever I think may be the most appropriate later, but, you know, at this point, you know, what appears to be happening is the last thing I wanted to happen, and, and I, you know, will be starting to be repetitive if I say it again. So, Ms. Whitby, before we call it open for public hearing, would you read the legislation?
This is an ordinance amending the North Little Rock Municipal Code to add a section making harassment of persons traveling across city rights-of-way a misdemeanor offense, third and final reading.
Okay, now, I want to withdraw it, and I'll decide what's the most appropriate way to pursue the goals, which, you know, I intend to continue to pursue as I've indicated, you know, previously. Let me make one other comment before I open this for public hearing. You know, we, you know, we'll bring our lunch, but I want y'all, or supper, but right now we've got about an hour and ten minutes if everybody takes their three minutes to speak. Now, not all of us to speak on, you know, on this legislation, there are three public hearings, and that would extend itself, you know, by people coming and going, so you're looking at probably somewhere an hour and a half to two hours if everybody took their three minutes. So, I want to emphasize that at this point, you know, our rules provide for three minutes. You know, I'm going to ask you to consider, number one, you know, shortening your time if you decide to come up there. You know, you don't have to take all your three minutes. Number two, you know, is if somebody else says virtually the same thing, you know, that you intend to say or covers your same point, you know, you know, you might say "me too" or something to that effect. What I'm, what I'm trying to do is, you know, some of you at the first, you know, aren't going to let us, I mean, you're going to have to stay here, and that's fine, too, if you want to, but, you know, our, our comments on allowing folks to speak is something, is something we believe in, but it's starting to grow. And, and so, we're looking at, right now, an average of about an hour and a half to two hours, you know, on those that have signed up, and that doesn't count the one, two, three, four, that have asked to speak at the end of the meeting. So, you know, I just want you to know that, you know, we're here, and we certainly appreciate you for you being here and want to hear what you say, but, you know, if you don't need, if you feel somebody else has said it, or you don't need to take the three minutes, you know, we'll, we'll certainly be appreciative with that. Let me go ahead and open the microphone on the legislation I just withdrew with the comments I made, and I know there were three or four that appeared to be here to want to comment on that, and if you still do, come to the microphone and let me put that umbrella over you.
Yes, Mayor, Scott Miller. I live downtown, Two Hundred and Fourteen West Fifth. Thank you for pulling it down, not because I was for or against it, but thank you for bringing up the education issue. That's what I wanted to briefly talk about. We pass ordinances, whether it be walking down the middle of the street, whether it be recycling with green bins, whatever, and we have lots of codes, lots of ordinances in that way, many of which are not enforced. There are problems for our codes department, and I want to thank you for committing to education with it. Before I came down here, I took thirty seconds and Googled under video for bicycle motorist safety, found four hundred and seventeen public access videos that I hope will show up on the city's website and/or Channel Four, and I hope the high school with their wonderful video department will work with the League of Cyclists in developing some cycling safety. I feel you'll reach out and touch a whole lot more people that way than will, than you will with an ordinance and make a true difference. It may not be as measurable to the voters in the end where you say, "I passed this law," but I truly believe you will make much more of a difference on the streets of our city, and I thank you.
And that's our intention. Microphone's still open for those who wanted to speak on this legislation. Okay. Thank you for those who didn't speak. We appreciate it. Not that we don't want to hear your comments. The next, the next item is a public hearing on, let me run it over, on Lakewood Recreational Parking District, and I know that, I think Alderman Ross, is there another sponsor on that? Okay, you want to introduce that, and then we'll see if anybody's here to talk about it?
What this is, when we redid all the parking ordinance, we included where each group, where different groups were able to form their own parking districts. I know in the past that some Aldermen had tried to pass a citywide no parking in their yard, and was not enough support citywide, so we went about this by being able to produce parking districts. Lakewood Recreation Improvement District in January of Two Thousand Eight sent me a letter asking if there was some way that we could find for them to be able to prohibit cars being parked in the front yard, and this is what this is, basically, this is the actual legislation tonight.
And that's Oh-O-Nine-Forty. So, is there anyone here that has signed up? I think I see a few names that want to speak on this legislation. If so, come to the microphone, identify yourself, and, you know, again, we look forward to your comments.
Mayor, city council members, thank you for the opportunity to let me speak to you tonight. I'm Ken Sullivan. I work for Lakewood Property Owners Association and Lakewood Recreation Improvement District Number Four. One of our missions as an improvement district, and I'm speaking for the Board of Directors of the improvement district, is to make decisions that help to improve property values of our homes in the area. We believe that by you giving us the opportunity to apply for this restricted parking district, that it will indeed aid us in helping to accomplish that mission, and I want to thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Nate Brandis, Ward Four, resident under the Lakewood Recreation Improvement District Number Four. A few points and questions that I have on the application itself. It contains two rules. Rule A, no parking in front or side yards except within a carport, garage, or upon a proper parking surface. Now, this is no problem for most, because those residents in question have options, and most of those options will not incur any cost. They can simply prepare the carport or the garage to take care of parked vehicles, very little cost involved. They can move the offending vehicles from the lawns to the street to be parked in front of their homes or their neighbors. Again, no cost involved. Or if they want to, spend a little money to take care of compliance, the North Little Rock zoning ordinance allows them to construct additional parking pads on their properties with direct access to the street, and those additional driveways or parking pads can co-equal up to fifty percent of their front yards, as long as those pads have access to the street. So, that is a cost option, but one that some of the residents may take the direction to do. Let's look at Rule B. No parking commercial or large... Let's look at Rule B, no parking commercial or large recreational vehicles. Little confusion here that needs to be cleared up, please. Alderman Height, one of the original sponsors of the ordinance, states that, yes, RVs, large RVs, can be parked on approved parking surfaces or in the carport or garage. To back him up, last Thursday at the Lakewood Property Owners Association office in the Lakewood Improvement Recreation District, a staff member in the office answered the question placed to her regarding parking of large RVs in Lakewood, and she stated, yes, they can be parked on approved parking pad surfaces in the garage or carport. Then we have an opposing view, I believe, stated by Alderwoman Ross, that states there is no RV parking whatsoever in Lakewood, period. So we're a little confused, and I hesitate to speak further because I really don't know where I'm at, based on two alternate sponsors' views, plus the Lakewood Improvement District stating, yes, you can park on a pad. Now, many families purchased in good faith their RV recreational vehicles. They did so without any consideration or concern about parking monthly fees that would be incurred by so doing. And "motorhomes" is a phrase that has been tossed out to define large recreational vehicles within council, to clarify, based on the specification in the ordinance concerning an eight-foot or higher stipulation. And we're not talking just about motorhomes, ladies and gentlemen, we're talking about fifth-wheel and bumper-toe camping trailers, all pickup slide-in campers, all pontoon boats, and any sport or ski boats that may have a structure that exceeds eight feet in height. So we want to be clear on that. Granted some residents, sir?
Getting close.
Thank you. Granted some residents can handle the additional cost involved, others may have a difficult time, and in this economy, it may be difficult to satisfy that by being forced to sell their property. In summation, I just would ask that we show some compassion and heart towards the fact that there is going to be some economic hardship incurred by some of the residents to satisfy the compliance regarding their large RV parking vehicles and boats. And please clear the confusion, thank you.
Let me just, one quick thing, we're a little out of, Nate, one of the things is you're a little ahead of yourself, but that's okay, because we've already done it, what I'm saying is that we're not talking about, at this point, we're not on 58, or it's old 58, we're on 60, which just has to do with the restricted parking that was currently up for public hearing. So anybody that wants to talk on 60, and, you know, we'll note your comments, and we'll save them for just a second. We have two public hearings, actually three. This is in relation to 60, and if there's anybody else that has signed up for that, fine. If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn that public hearing, and then the next public hearing is on electrical, electronic changeable copy signs, that there are two issues up here, one with a moratorium and two with the signed legislation itself, and then we'll go into any other legislation that people have signed up for. So just a tad bit ahead, but we got your comments, Nate. So, I don't see anybody else on 60. So let me adjourn that public hearing, and now move to the third and final public hearing before we have general comments on legislation, and that is on electronic changeable copy signs. Alderman, there are several council members that have signed up on that, sponsoring that legislation, and it's my understanding that, what is it, Alderman Witcher, you're the lead council member, so I'll let you introduce that, and then we'll open it for public comment.
Mayor, we have, over a period of time, have had a number of discussions regarding changeable copy signs and the lighting of those signs, the appropriateness of those signs. Under the auspices of the City Council, we had an opportunity to meet several weeks ago in a committee-type forum and just talk very openly about our concerns and discuss what we thought might be the best remedy for the changeable copy signs. Unfortunately, the deeper we got into it, and this has been going on since April, we find that both applicable law and regulations throughout the country are being challenged on a regular basis from a legal standpoint, and so there's very little guidance to date that we can utilize to formulate whatever policy you want to form. And there were several other issues that we discussed, concerned about our neighborhoods, the appropriateness of those signs, and there's just not really a good way, from our perspective at this time, to deal with those measures. So what we're bringing to you is a recommendation to hold off and establish an additional time moratorium, which would begin, actually in April of this year, and extend for as much as two years, and that's a recommendation that we have. And, you know, if someone has a better idea, if someone thinks that we need to do something different, you must certainly, you know, speak up, and let's talk about it, so.
With that introduction, I'm gonna consider, unless you have an objection, that comments on the moratorium, 0957, perhaps maybe the more popular one, if we want to say that with regard to people wanting to make comments, and/or, you know, 0959, which is more substantive legislation, you know, would you say those two are somewhat companion, Alderman Witcher?
The second piece of legislation deals specifically with regulation of existing changeable copy signs in order to provide some guidance for those until we finalize whatever regulations we're going to establish at some point in time.
Well, I guess, it says convene a public hearing regarding electronic changeable copy signs. Are those separate or together?
Separate, Mayor.
All right, well, let's do, let's do first things first, then. Let's go ahead and have any of those who want to talk on the moratorium issue, and then we'll, you know, visit about the second issue, which is 59. So anybody wanting to speak on 00957, please come to the microphone and try to be as succinct as possible. With that, the microphone's open.
I'm Mike Coulson, I'm president of Coulson Oil Company headquartered at 15th and Pike for, since 1969, and I'm a little confused about what the moratorium will do. What I'm, what I need is the continued ability to put up changeable electronic price signs for motor fuel. What I passed around are two examples of, the only two signs I have put up, one is at Canus and Chacriferford in Little Rock, it's a Shell station, one is a Valero station in Morelton. Those signs have one color, they don't change unless I need to go up or down on the price, they don't flash, they don't scroll, they're just there, like the current price signs are there until they are changed. It's safer changing for employees, the current technology is about 25 years old with the plastic numerals and the suction cup, it's about 10 feet long. Lots of folks who have done that get hit in the head by wind and so forth, and it's a fairly dangerous situation. These new signs allow us to change from the sign or inside the store. In my budget plan for next year, it was my intent for all 15 locations that we supply motor fuel to in the city of North Little Rock to install these new signs. It is the latest technology, and I'd appreciate the opportunity to continue to do that and not violate your moratorium or your ordinance. Thank you. Any questions?
Mayor, can we ask a question of the?
Sure.
Mr. Coulson, you've got, it's my knowledge that you supply gasoline to, how many stations throughout the state of Arkansas?
About 230.
Are any of the cities in the state of Arkansas prohibiting you of placing this type of sign in any of those locations?
Charlie, to my knowledge, no. I know a year ago I rode around Hot Springs, and I was amazed that most of my competition has already done that, and I was sort of oblivious to that, so I don't believe they have.
Thank you.
Alderman Ross?
On the first one, you know, it shows the sign, it has the fuelman underneath here, does that, I mean, are there scrolling words on that?
No, everything else is stationary, plastic signs, we're all used to seeing. Thank you.
Just hand it to both sides and let them circulate it. And one of the things, if you are gonna have anything you want to pass out to council members, if you give it to Ms. Whitby, then we'll start it coming from the city clerk's angle, so feel free to go to our city clerk, and, you know, if not now, anytime, as soon as you'd like, to get that to her. Yes, yes, sir?
I'm Jerry Hyde, owner of Signs First in North Little Rock, and I've spoken here on the same issue, you know, before. Basically, I want to cover two or three things. Obviously, being in the sign business, I'm not in favor of a moratorium. I think it was expressed very succinctly before, just before me, as to why, why it's not a good idea. Any moratorium on digital signs would affect not only just the digital signs on auto dealerships, they would affect time and temperature signs, those are digital signs, gasoline-changing signs, all of that's encompassed in the category of digital signs. We think that Robert Boils and his folks have done an excellent job, probably one of the best in the country in terms of documenting the specifications on how you regulate digital signs, both in terms of brightness, frequency of change, et cetera. What I handed you was a, I'm a member of the International Sign Association, which is a group out of Alexandria, Virginia, that represents the sign business both in the U.S. and internationally, and I'm very active in that group, so I sent them a copy of the ordinance, and this was the reply that I got. It's addressed to Alderman Witcher because he was recognized as the chairman of the group. And I wanted to point out just one, one aspect, he emphasized one thing that was emphasized in the, as one of the reasons in the ordinance, having to do with the cost of the signs, and their conclusion is that's clearly and undeniably factually incorrect, because basically, I'm not gonna read all this, but basically, the idea is that on-premise signage is the most important thing for a small business in terms of making their business, you know, known, you know, people, you know, you can do billboards, you can do whatever, but nothing replaces that sign on front of the building, because that people see as they drive by. The cost of on-premise signage can be amortized over a period of time, longer period of time, depending on the amortization, you know, that you, that you choose and that tax will allow. So even in the case of a digital sign, even though the initial cost for a small business may be fairly significant, over the long haul, the cost per viewing by, by people that you're trying to sell to is less. So basically, you know, my comments are, you know, in terms of the sign business, I think it's very evident signs are important, extremely important, especially small businesses. I think North Little Rock is no exception to that, we really need the recognition. Being in the sign business, obviously, I'm prejudiced, but I'm also a sign business owner, and I don't know what I would do without that sign in front of my business. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone's still open, and we're concentrating on the moratorium at this point. If I could acknowledge the principal topic, yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Richard Beard, I am a resident of the city and have owned a business here in the city for about 25 years. I do not have a dog in this fight in that the business, my type of business, sign, electronic or otherwise, would be of no benefit. I do, however, own another business outside of the jurisdiction, and I actually looked at an electronic sign a year or two ago and decided that that was not a good return on cost there. But I think it's appropriate that I get to make that decision and not you folks. Being a businessman, it seems like the things that I hear on a national level out of Washington, I and my kind have become the enemy. We may provide the jobs and the tax base and so forth, but everybody wants to tell us what we can do and what we must do, and it just gets tiresome, and we have enough of that, I think, at the state and federal level, that I, the less I get, have to get pushed around at the local level, the better that I would like it. I would sure hate to be a business out there on Mollville Boulevard on the North Little Rock sign that couldn't put a sign up and have a competitor two blocks down the road that could put a sign up. It just doesn't seem right to me. You know, you probably do what you're gonna do, but some of us are getting closer and closer to having had enough. That's what I've got to say. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
My name's Charlie Knott, I'm president of Northeast Lakewood Associated Neighborhoods. The comments I have this evening are my personal comments. I am in favor of this moratorium as spelled out in this ordinance for the same reasons that I think are stated quite well in the ordinance itself, that this type of sign can be a potential hazard to drivers, and it can have an adverse impact on the appearance of our neighborhoods and communities, and certainly because of the brightness and action of the signs can be a nuisance to the surrounding areas. I think it's a complex issue, I think it will take comprehensive legislation to properly regulate the permitting, installation, and operation of these signs, but I think the legislation must also be comprehensive enough going forward, because this is such rapid-changing technology. And I think this moratorium will certainly provide time for that kind of legislation, and I would ask that each of you support that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sure. Just a second, I think we, well, I think we had one quick question.
Ask one quick question, please. Yes, sir. Would you be opposed if the, if the signs were on the main arteries of four-lane roads here in North Little Rock? Only, only, the only place they could put them would be on a four-lane highway.
I think that's the kind of thing that has to be decided in, in the legislation. I think it would certainly, from the standpoint of the appearance of the community in our neighborhoods, an all-out ban would be the best, but if our, if the city council is to consider having them in certain areas, then I think it would really require all the aldermen, both those in favor and against changeable copy signs, working together to come up with the best legislation to properly regulate them in those areas if they're to be used in certain areas.
Thank you, sir.
Microphone's open, thank you. Identify yourself and take your three minutes or less.
Good evening and thank you. My name's Mike Fritz, I'm the president of Little Caesar's Pizza of Arkansas. We are a 25-year-old company based here in Sherwood, Arkansas. We have 17 stores in central Arkansas, employ about 350 employees, and certainly pay tens of thousands of dollars a year in taxes. And I want to speak specifically to the electronic sign moratorium. You know, there's been concerns and issues raised about the, the safety features, and I would simply suggest or offer up that existing ordinances that the city already has addresses those very concerns, such as brightness, speed, effect, the display, all of these things can be controlled by these new technologies. And certainly, I think those of us in the business community understand that those sorts of controls need to be, need to be in place. Our desire is to attract customers, not to distract them and put them into the median or into trees, so certainly we're gonna do our level best to assure that that can be affected. The concerns about visual blight, these technologies cost tens of thousands of dollars and require a significant amount of design and time. We look at contrast, we look at colors, we look at presentation, and we look at times of day, and I would submit to you that these new technologies, rather than being blight, are actually much more than, much more dynamic than some of the things that we're used to, such as balloons, banners, and handheld shakers, in fact, you know, a strategy that we utilize. So again, I would submit from a blight standpoint, these are actually more dynamic, more precise, and more controlled than, than other uses that and more controlled than other uses that our industry has used in the past. With regard to interference with the homes, I wholeheartedly acknowledge and respect the concerns of homeowners. If my sign is too bright, if I'm shining into somebody's backyard, then absolutely I need to back that sign down. Maybe we control that by the hours of operation or the color codes. But I would submit to you, over the last several months, the amount of time that I've spent and other colleagues have spent, that the technology is out there to find that middle ground to where we're not annoying, we're not obtrusive, we're not distracting. However, on the other side, we are able to attract our customers, let them know we're here, and attract their attention to us. I would respectfully submit to you, ladies and gentlemen, that a two-year moratorium is too long. This technology has been out there for years. It's been in use all over this country and all over the world. The information is readily available to us. I think the parameters and controls are in place, and I would volunteer myself and I think other members of the business community to participate in any sort of panel or discussion to come up with some reasonably agreeable features. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We've got a couple of quick questions, again, if you don't mind. That's up to the panelists and...
Not at all. I'd be happy to answer the questions.
My question is based on something you said, the statement of, "How do you attract without distracting?" And I know you made some other comments, but what is that?
The one thing that we've researched, that we've looked into, if you're too fast and too garish, and it's not unlike, these signs are not unlike any other advertising medium, whether it be TV, radio, or print. If my print ad is obnoxious, people are gonna throw it away. If it's not G-rated, I'm not gonna attract the families that I want to come to my store. So what I mean by that is that we can attract by controlling the speed and the effects and the content without becoming distracting. I know full well that if I blur a bunch of letters and fonts and neon colors across a sign, when the traffic speed is 55 miles an hour, I'm causing some grief. If it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit, I have to be respectful and understanding of that. So it's gonna be a fixed display, it's probably gonna have no scrolling letters, and it may simply say, in our case, "Hot and ready pizza, $6," and it stays there for 15 seconds. That's where we need to work together, because it is up to, is it a four-lane road? Is there a center-left turn lane? Is it well-lit? Is it heavily landscaped? My resistance to a two-year moratorium is that every single street that we all do business on is different from each other. We have to adjust. And those, like I said, the parameters are within the existing ordinances, and the technology exists within the offerings that are out there that we can make those adjustments. Yes, ma'am?
I was just curious, do you have any franchises in Conway?
We do have a franchise in Conway.
You know, they have a total ban on this and have had for 10 years. Has that affected your business in Conway any?
I can't answer that question because I've never been able to compare. We've always dealt on static signage in Conway. We've never had the opportunity to try the digital signage. So it's one of those apples-to-oranges sorts of things. I don't know. I mean, we do everything we can in Conway to advertise in other mediums, print, radio, television, shakers, handbills, direct mailing. I'd love to put a digital sign up in Conway, I won't lie to you. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jo Melton. I live at Nine Lakewood Drive. Couple of things that Mr. Fritz said really brought my attention. One is, it sounds as though there aren't any studies to determine that this is a good thing, so we don't know that revenues are increased by this. I would never stand up here and ask someone not to sell signs. This isn't about signing, not putting a sign up, it's about digital signs, which although a sign company might say, or a person who purchases these signs might say, "We're going to regulate them remotely." Within seconds, they can change what's on that sign, and they can change it to be something 24 hours a day. They could be in Japan and change that sign, so how are you going to regulate this? I appreciate the fact that many of the businesses and the sign companies, so far, the only people I've heard speak tonight are people who sell signs, and they don't give them away. And so there is a special interest there, but they do have other signage that they can sell. And they can sell other signage that is not obtrusive, that is not in my face, in your face, it's not bright-colored, it doesn't change at their whim or say what they want it to say. In our day and age, we know, in our day and age, we know that sometimes things are getting pretty tacky, and there might not be things said on those signs that we want our children to see. And if we have a proliferation of them, if we don't go with this moratorium to study it and consider what we want to do, then a proliferation can come, and we've got it, and then if we need to pay for amortization or it's not what we really wanted, the cost is prohibitive. This isn't a banner, this is thousands of dollars for a sign. I have many, many pages here. I can tell you from, I have probably, let's see, 12 states. And many cities in those states that have bans or strict restrictions, they're studying what to do on a national level. They have had sign companies come in, I could name some that I won't here, that have gone in and put the sign in anyway, and then they ask for forgiveness. And then it puts us in an awkward position of giving forgiveness. But the moratorium is wonderful because it gives us time to see what other cities have done and consider that, and I think it's a very progressive thing that you're doing and that you're considering doing, the moratorium, until you get a handle on what other cities around the country are doing. Thanks.
Thank you. And I appreciate, we've had a few plaudits on both sides, and I'm gonna ask you if you could sort of keep your comments to the microphone, and let's just sort of refrain a little bit, if we could, from, you know, sharing your thoughts on a general way. So if I could ask that, I'd appreciate it. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Scott Miller. I live down here in Argenta, 214 West Fifth. I'm also a small business owner. I own three small businesses. I come here with mixed feelings. I'm going to speak in favor of the moratorium with some exceptions. It's a genie, frankly, if we let out of the bottle right now. We're gonna be grandfathering in multiple signs. We have sign districts we're grandfathering in that we don't want to pay amortization for. You know, it's an issue. However, at the same time, as a business owner, I feel it's unfair to wait two years to make this decision. As a business owner, I preferably would want at least no more than a year, if that. I mean, this isn't a new technology. It may be new to North Little Rock, but it's not a new technology, and it's not an insurmountable problem. And frankly, as a business owner, if I was, if I wanted an electronic sign, which I don't for any of my businesses, I would want an answer sooner than two years about what I was doing for an electronic sign. I would hope in the end that somehow you find a way to accommodate Mr. Coulson. I personally don't feel electronic changeable sign is a gas station number for the price of gas on the gas station. If that's what we're calling electronic sign in this day and age of technology, a changeable sign, somehow we've warped that a little bit too far in terms of changeable signs, in my opinion. And I want to leave you with this thought. New technology creates new problems for cities. I'm on the cutting edge right now of looking at how I can use RDS Low Whip Power FM to broadcast advertisements directly into your car as it goes by on certain radio channels, or tap into your Wi-Fi on your car when your car is built with Wi-Fi. If you think you have a sign problem now, wait till it shows up on your dashboard, and it will in the next few years.
Thank you. Microphone is open.
Patrick Stare, 411 West Fifth Street, and I support the moratorium, as some of you might not be surprised to find out. My particular issue with the changeable signage is and has always been the safety issue, which I think continues to be a problem, and I think research and other legislation around the country continues to support the safety problems with changeable signs. As far as the moratorium goes, one person's undue restriction on what they can do is another person's safety protection. And while the businesses may not like having certain restrictions on it, I, as a person who travels on the roads, like that particular restriction, as I like a lot of restrictions that we put on our businesses for purposes of safety, whether fiscal or physical. As long as, excuse me, as long as our signs, as long as businesses can put up signs that have any motion, that have any semblance of motion, and that can change any more frequently than once a day, then I am in favor of the moratorium, and I think it should stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone's still open.
Robert Fury, Indian Hills, Ward Four. I miss the old burna shave signs. Used to be some on the Highway 365 northwest up here coming in from Quitman. I miss the traditional billboards I grew up with later on in the 60s and 70s. In the last 10 years or so, advertising has become quite invasive, and there's many, many more forms of it. You know, the sides of buildings and the wraps on vehicles, and the proliferation of signs of all kinds in lots of places. I support Coulson Oil's position with their use of their signs. I think Signs First ought to be able to have a sign outside his business. I think that the existing city code is woefully inadequate in controls for land use and zoning. I think with good land use controls, good zoning controls, and intelligent codes, that we can protect ourselves against invasive advertising. Mr. Fritz does not care for signs that are too garish, and I agree. Our ordinances don't get into what's garish and what's not, and I think that gets into land use and zoning. Mr. Knodt said this is a complex issue. I think pretty much everybody here will agree with it, including the sign companies, if forced to give their honest opinion. Mostly, I'm against the invasiveness of certain types of advertising, a lot of types of advertising. I will be blunt and tell you that I don't care for the Cruz One sign up on JFK and Park Hill. I think that one of these days, the land use on the south side of I-40, opposite First Pentecostal Church, there could be a land use over there that is not compatible with First Pentecostal Church's sign. I don't care for the sign at Discount Tires that JFK and carry. At late at night, when it's a very residential neighborhood, and late at night, when especially visibility is low, that sign is blinding. I understand that Ace Signs out of Benton has installed a lot of signs, these electronic changeable copy signs in North Rock, including the one on Malmell that was noticed by the people in Walton Heights over across the river. I understand that when Ace Signs installs one of these signs, they can offer the client either remote control of the brightness of that sign, or the client can choose to do it themselves. In short, I believe that we need the moratorium. I would like to see a committee meet regularly. I don't think it'll take two years, but please protect us from invasive advertising.
Mr. Fury, your clock, your internal clock is pretty good. That was right on three minutes. Thank you.
I'm good.
Let me, let me just, you know, we may get a little light system to help me out, but I'm gonna try a two-step process on this. I'm gonna do an okay when we're at 15 seconds, and then a stop when we hit 30, or three minutes. So 15 seconds ahead of time, two minutes and 45 seconds, you'll get this, and three minutes, I'll give you this. All right. Microphone's open. We're on 57, the moratorium.
Hello, I'm Dan Chapman, Chapman Service Company. I've had my business here in North Little Rock for 15 years now, and I was in the market for a digital sign. My competition has it. I think it's very unfair for you to tell me that I can't buy one. I've worked very hard with my company. I've employed North Little Rock people with my company, and if I can afford it, I'm gonna buy it. What are you gonna tell me next? My health care?
Thank you for your brevity. Microphone's still open. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and end the public hearing on the moratorium issue, and now we're talking about, anybody that wants to speak on 59, the sign issue. So the microphone's open for, and Alderman Witcher, you want to just quickly introduce that one?
Yes, sir. 59 basically is a housekeeping issue regarding standards, have a lot of lighting for existing changeable copy signs that we have within the city. And there's both a table and some guidance on how much light they can put out. That is one of the issues that continually has been at the top of everyone's list. That pretty well sums it up.
Microphone's open on 59.
I'm Donnie Copeland with Apostolic Church here in North Little Rock. I'm a pastor here. I was at the last meeting, and I was very interested to find out that one of our council people asked one of the proponents of the signs, for some reason, where they were from. And then after reading the paper today and then hearing a couple of comments, that some of the driving force behind the beginning of this seems to be that someone in Little Rock complained. And I'm not saying that's the main reason, but that maybe seemed to get the ball rolling. And so I thought that was a little disingenuous that we would take someone who was a proponent for signage and try to find out where they're from, and find out they're from somewhere besides North Little Rock, yet the complaints from the other side of the river gets this ball rolling. You've heard from business owners here tonight that have a vested interest in having signage. And so I think that's very, very important. For our church, we have 77,000 cars a day that pass our building. Although we are probably in the upper echelon, and I don't say that bragging, we're greatly blessed to have the revenue to buy a $150,000 sign, and have already made the commitment to do that. A family has already donated the money, and now we can't get the sign if you do this. And quite honestly, while we have $150,000 to buy a sign, that is a drop in a bucket to doing a television or radio program, or not program, but advertising campaign over a year, or two, or three years. So the best, and really the only way that we can effectively advertise to the 77,000 people that pass our building a day is a digital sign. All the other churches up and down, Highway 167 where we are, and I think Councilman Alderman Gaines mentioned about four-lane highways. And so it puts us at a disadvantage, and we don't feel like we're at all competing with other churches. But what we are trying to do is let people know about our divorce prevention, divorce care, our after-school programs, our programs for children, disadvantaged children, our reading programs, all the things that we're doing, and there's just simply no way in a city this size to let them know without this type of signage. I also thought it was pretty interesting that it was mentioned about the moving signage and how it was disruptive, I think is the word used, when, I think it was pointed out last time, the highway department, rather than shirking from using moving signage and digital signage, if you'll notice, the highway department is increasing their usage of digital and moving signage. And on a scale of 1 to 10, I asked someone, very knowledgeable, I said, "On a scale of 1 to 10, where does our strictness, as far as how we rate signs in North Little Rock, where do we rate?" And they said, "Probably somewhere in the 7 to 8 range, 1 being the laxest, 10 being the strictest." So we already have a strict, as far as outlook and our regulating signs. My wife asked me before I came here tonight, "And, Mayor, am I doing okay?" I hadn't got the...
Go ahead. I'm gonna give you an extra five seconds, because I'm just getting ready to do it.
My wife asked me, she said, "Look, you say normally these things are already decided." Said, "Why go? Why even go if it's already been decided?" And I feel like probably, it's already been decided, you guys are already, you already know how you're gonna vote, you already know it's gonna be two years. I mean, I've been on councils, I've been on meetings, I know you don't go into a meeting... meeting not knowing what's gonna happen. But I believe this, I believe that we have to stand up, and we have to speak, and I thank you for that. North Little Rock has always been known, when I got here, Mayor and Council, you were known as a pro-business community. You've gotten business, we've gotten business from Little Rock. And I've realized, I feel like this takes us in the opposite direction. I hope you would, that you would strongly consider doing away with this moratorium and this whole thing. Thank you so much.
Now, you note if you say good things, you get a few extra seconds, so...
I'm the mayor, City Council. I'm Jason Offit, President of Ace Sign Company. And what I understand, this was put in effect in April of this year, and we're here four months later, and I think that the council has met one time on this. So it was done for a study of the safety and such, and they've met one time, and bounced a few ideas off each other, and we've made no decisions. So if we go for a two-year period, my feeling is, is we'll go for two years and go, "Well, sorry, we haven't decided anything yet, we're still gonna ban these." And this is just more restriction on our businesses that are struggling now. We're trying to compete against other cities, Sherwood, Little Rock. I think it's the wrong direction. I think we should try to help our businesses. Our federal government is putting stimulus plans, like cash for clunkers out, and what's the city doing? Looking for more restrictions. And I'll leave you with this, will this help or hurt our businesses? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, again, we're on the sign issue. The moratorium issue has already been sort of adjourned at this moment. So the sign issue, which is 59, yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I was about to ask about that also. This 59 concerns the acceptable level of light output of electronic changeable copy And I see that the ordinance contains a criterion for what would be acceptable for a new sign. It has to do with the increase in the light, in the ambient light in the area with a sign off compared to with a sign illuminated. And it's limited to an increase of, it's in the fourth whereas of 0.3-foot candles to ambient light. And on the second page, there's a table that goes along with that. And I think this is much better than the previous criterion that mentioned 300-foot Lambert's. And I don't know that the city has ever been able to measure foot Lambert's, but they don't now. And so I am happy to see a measurement that makes sense, that can be, that a device can be used for, to determine compliance with the code. I suspect that these standards in this table on the second page of the ordinance that have to do with the sizes of signs and the distance between the sign and the measuring device, those probably have an intelligent source. I would like to know, though, for example, for a couple of my favorite signs, how this table and how this criterion applies to the sign, the Cruz 1 sign in Park Hill and JFK? Would this standard, this increase of .3-foot candles, would, does the Cruz 1 sign, does that fall within that?
I don't know. Let's talk, let's talk to our city attorney after the, I mean, that's, we're not, remember, this is public comment section, we get into questions back and forth.
I don't expect an answer. This is just my question. And I'm basically in favor of the ordinance, but I would like to know what this criterion, get some feel for it, whether or not this criterion is reasonable. I suspect that it is, but I'd like some feedback. And I'd like to know how, if, how the First Pentecostal Church, how that, if it's more or less than .3-foot candles increase. If it's .6, I'd like to know, just for comparison, thank you.
Microphone's still open on 09, or 59. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn that portion of the public hearings. We're through our formal public hearings, all right? Anybody else that signed up to speak on any other agenda item, microphone's open.
I'm Presley Meltzer of Non-Liquid Drive, and I welcome this opportunity to speak to you about the parking ordinance and the change in it. I would, again, I'm confused, I think many of us are, as to how RVs get treated in the new parking ordinance. I just asked the council to please be aware that our city has strict building codes to protect neighborhoods, and those building codes pertain, among other things, to setbacks from the street and setbacks from side property lines. When someone parks an RV that's 45 feet long and 13 feet high in their driveway permanently, or almost permanently there, that becomes like an addition to their home or a garage that they've just built. If someone wanted to build a garage that big, or a bedroom on their house extending out over the building line, they would have to go before the Board of Adjustment to get special permission. And I don't understand why we think we need to allow someone who's purchased a motorhome to drive it home and park in their driveway and block the view of neighbors' homes and otherwise change the whole face of the neighborhood. I appreciate those people have bought the RVs, and I think they all need to also be very aware of the rights of people who live in the neighborhoods and have built their homes and want to keep it a neighborhood environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone's still open on anything else we hadn't talked about already, that you've signed up for.
My name's Charlie Knight. This comment has to do with the comment that Nate made earlier, so I'll try to be very brief with this. 4.3.1A does prohibit the parking, storing, or keeping of vehicles in front or side yards unless on an approved surface. 4.3.1B prohibits parking of commercial and large recreational vehicles in front or side yards or street. It doesn't mention unless on an approved surface. So, as stated earlier, I think it's very important that this be clarified and that determination be made that the ordinance as amended is adequate to go forward with, because I think there has been some good effort already put into this and trying to clarify this.
Thank you. Okay, I think, not seeing anybody else coming forward, I'm gonna go ahead and consider we pass the agenda item on public comment, both public hearings as well as comments of folks who have signed up to speak to this particular legislation. With that, Ms. Whitby, unless you see differently, let's go to unfinished business.
There was a gentleman that wanted to speak on a condemnation. He signed up now. I didn't know if he wanted to wait until we called it.
That's kind of nice. We call those public hearings, we call them legislation.
Okay. So where shall we start?
Unfinished business.
09-118, Alderman, Baggett, and Gaines.
I'm gonna hold that.
New Business, 09-133, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1905 East Second Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Okay, as we normally do, I'd like to get a motion and a second, and then we, motion made and seconded that we adopt this legislation. I'm gonna go ahead and call for a public hearing on 1905 East Second Street. This is relation to condemnation of this property. The listed owner is Keith Kimble, K-I-M-B-L-E. So convene that public hearing. We're open for comment on 1905 East Second Street, Keith Kimble. Please state your name.
Yes, sir. My name is Reverend Derek Easter. I am the pastor of Bailey Chapel Baptist Church of North Little Rock, and I'm coming today on behalf of this property, asking if you all would consider giving us a, extending the time to condemn this property to 60 days. We're in communication with Mr. Kimble about purchasing this property and clearing it off ourself. If you, we're asking that you would consider not condemning it and giving us 60 days to purchase it and get it cleaned off ourself.
Let me ask this question, Mr. City Attorney, or Code. If we went ahead and condemned it, what's our procedure for going ahead? Tom, if you wanna come, the microphone, remind me about how this would affect that effort.
I think that he still wants the building gone, and I think in the past that we have amended the 30 days to maybe 90 days, to give him 90 days to tear it down. And that way, if something happens, then we won't have to start over.
Okay. Alderman.
How far is the church located from this building?
We are one house removed from the building.
Okay.
Okay, what I think, based on what I'm understanding, and certainly with the two council members will say, support, or at least non-objection, that we'll go ahead and amend this 30 days to 90 days, which should give you plenty of time to deal with that. With that, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, no. Mr. City Attorney, anyone else wanting to speak on this property? Let me adjourn the public hearing and ask for an amendment, Mr. City Attorney.
That, I believe the amendment being discussed is within Section 2 and within Section 3, that the 30-day terms be amended to 90 days.
Do I hear an amendment to that effect?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the amendment to change 30 to 90? Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Just one second. Okay, I have a question, though. After the 90 days, does the $50 a day go into effect?
I assume everything goes into effect, but after 90 days, that would go into effect as it currently reads.
Okay. So we're going ahead and condemning it, but we're extending that, just extending it 30 days to 90 days, but after 90 days, they still, it'll be a fine of $50 a day, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
09-134, Mayor Hayes.
All right, 90 days. Let's go, you know, use that property. We like to support using property. Uh-huh. Yes, sir. Next item.
09-134.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 224 East 16th Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing property owner a period of time to abate said nuisance.
Do they have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded, moved and seconded. Let me go ahead and call a public hearing regarding the condemnation of 224 East 16th Street. That's 224 East 16th Street. Listed owner is U.M. Holloway III. Microphone's open. Going once, going twice, turn to public hearing, call and roll, Ms. Whitby.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
09-135, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution approving amounts of liens to be certified to the Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real properties as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances in the city of North Little Rock.
Don't think this needs an explanation. We've done this before. Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
09-136, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the Marin City Clerk to purchase certain real property located at 420 West 13th Street.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Procedure, Mayor, do we need to have a hearing on 135?
You're right. It does say convene a public hearing. I'm sorry.
Correct. I'm supposed to catch that, aren't I?
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Did you catch that, Mr. City Attorney?
I didn't get my flag out fast enough, Mayor.
All right. Well, let's move, we expunge the vote.
Having voted in the majority, I move to expunge the vote.
Second.
And I apologize for the error. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
09-136, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the Marin City Clerk to purchase certain real property located at 420 West 13th Street in the city of North Little Rock and appropriating funds.
Can I get a motion, and I'll explain it?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is, the appraisal was actually a little bit higher than this. You know, this is in the entrance on the left-hand side, as you go into our compound. You know, obviously, opportunities to add to compound acreage don't come very often, and certainly allows us to deal with the property in a way that's constructive. This has been owned, you know, by a family, and I think the last resident just recently passed away.
But there's an, that's the property that, when you're traveling on 13th Street, it's on the left, just before you go into the...
Right across from the main public works.
Move for adoption.
Well, it's already moved for adoption.
Always a...
Moving second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
09-137, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating funds for site preparation for construction of Fire Station Number 11 in the city of North Little Rock.
Can I get a motion, and I'll explain that?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. This, you know, we purchased the property out, you know, for Fire Station Number 11, and, you know, there was some fill that needs to be done. I know we've had our, we've selected a construction manager, and, you know, this amount should, you know, cover some of those costs, as well as, you know, preparation for the, for the fire station. Now, recognizing that we've got a grant application in for some, I believe it's stimulus funding, but if not, it's certainly a part of a pot that is out there to help us construct this. We also are gonna move, and seeing if the chief's out there, we also are moving forward, Chief Malden, with applying for grant funding that's available to help us support the hiring of firefighters for this, both of which will have an effect, certainly more so with the grant and hiring firefighters. And that seems, it's not necessarily stimulus funding, that's been, that grant opportunity's been there. And so we're moving forward with that. The latter, the one with firefighters, is absolutely critical for us to be able to move forward to the fire station, certainly in the operation and maintenance budget items that we're currently dealing with. But we're very hopeful that we will get some assistance in moving forward with the construction of this fire station. Chief Malden, if there's anything I said that's in there, or anything you want to add to it?
You're pretty well covered, and Mayor, you know, this is work that's gotta be done to get the station ready. Part of the grant, the stimulus money to build this station, is, it gives us some priority, it has to be shovel-ready. And right now, this would help this be shovel-ready, and it needs to be done in the next couple of months, because it has to be done during dry period. And if we can't get it done in the next couple of months, then we're probably gonna have to wait till next year to get this done. And if we have to do that, then our grant could be in jeopardy for this.
So I want to emphasize that this is a step, and we have yet to, you know, we've got several other steps. I just wanted to ensure folks that they need to be mindful of. So if there's any other questions, please feel free, Alderman Witcher.
Mayor, what are the other steps?
Well, the other steps are, you know, finding the money to build the fire station. We've got a grant request in, it's gonna cost us, I think our projected cost is about a million seven or eight.
Million five, I believe.
Million five.
Yes, sir.
So that money is a big step. And secondly, is finding assistance in helping hire firefighters, which is another grant opportunity that we're gonna be submitting if we hadn't already. So there are two big steps left.
Okay. I am curious if either of the council members from that area have seen the design for that fire station.
I've not seen the design.
Neither have I.
We want to get you all involved with it, obviously.
We can make that a...
We're shooting for a lead certification fire station that's been reflected in the grant. I think we've talked about that on several occasions, you know, to try to minimize or enhance its sustainability, and minimize its drawn utilities and others, that other things that we think both enhance the grant application, but as well as provide for a very economic structure to operate. So I'd encourage, I mean, again, we got two big steps that remain to be seen, or remain to be accomplished, but I think we all want this to happen, and I think we want it to This, you know, we purchased the property out, you know, for Fire Station Number Eleven, and, you know, there was some fill that needs to be done. I know we've had our, we've selected a construction manager, and, you know, this amount should, you know, cover some of those costs, as well as, you know, preparation for the, for the fire station. Now, recognizing that we've got a grant application in for some, I believe it's stimulus funding, but if not, it's certainly a part of a pot that is out there to help us construct this. We also are going to move, and seeing if the chief's out there, we also are moving forward, Chief Malden, with applying for grant funding that's available to help us support the hiring of firefighters for this, both of which will have an effect, certainly more so with the grant and hiring firefighters. And that seems, it's not necessarily stimulus funding, that's been, that grant opportunity's been there. And so, we're moving forward with that. The latter, the one with firefighters, is absolutely critical for us to be able to move forward to the fire station, certainly in the operation and maintenance budget items that we're currently dealing with. But we're very hopeful that we will get some assistance in moving forward with the construction of this fire station. Chief Malden, if there's anything I said that's in there, or anything you want to add to it.
You're pretty well covered, and Mayor, you know, this is work that's got to be done to get the station ready. Part of the grant, the stimulus money to build this station, is, it gives us some priority, it has to be shovel-ready. And right now, this would help this be shovel-ready, and it needs to be done in the next couple of months, because it has to be done during dry period. And if we can't get it done in the next couple of months, then we're probably going to have to wait till next year to get this done. And if we have to do that, then our grant could be in jeopardy for this.
So I want to emphasize that this is a step, and we have yet to, you know, we've got several other steps. I just wanted to ensure folks that they need to be mindful of. So if there's any other questions, please feel free. Alderman Whicher?
Mayor, what are the other steps?
Well, the other steps are, you know, finding the money to build the fire station. We've got a grant request in. It's going to cost us, I think our projected cost is about a million seven or eight.
Million five, I believe.
Million five?
Yes, sir.
So that money is a big step. And secondly, is finding assistance in helping hire firefighters, which is another grant opportunity that we're going to be submitting if we hadn't already. So there are two big steps left.
Okay. I am curious if either of the council members from that area have seen the design for that fire station.
I've not seen the design.
Neither have I.
We want to get you all involved with it, obviously.
We can make that a.
We're shooting for a lead certification.
Yes, sir.
Fire station.
Yes.
That's been reflected in the grant. I think we've talked about that on several occasions, you know, to try to minimize or enhance its sustainability and minimize its drawn utilities and others, that other things that we think both enhance the grant application, but as well as provide for a very economic structure to operate. So I'd encourage, I mean, again, we've got two big steps that remain to be seen, or remain to be accomplished, but I think we all want this to happen, and I think we want it to happen sooner than later, and this is a step that we feel is essential to get us in that direction. Yes, ma'am?
Well, anytime any new station or anything new fire, Station Five in Park Hill, there's always question, will that station be shut down to move the firemen out there or something? I know that when this was brought up on the agenda, that that brought all that to the forefront again, and there were many questions, and I know we need the new fire station. We desperately need that new fire station.
Absolutely.
But then again, Park Hill does not want to lose Station Five, so.
We have made a commitment. I certainly have, that we do not intend to close Park Hill. And that commitment is recalled and will be honored. Again, I said that if you, you know, that a pink key is being able to afford, both in the construction as well as in the operation, and these two grant opportunities, the latter, which is with personnel, is much more of a critical need. You know, we still have the ability to find capital money, you know, because of twenty-five percent of that penny sales tax has to go to capital, and that's a good thing. So, you know, we have to find that, you know, whether it's there or not, you know, we're going to, in all likelihood, put together a package, you know, that is similar to ones that we've done in the past about borrowing some funding to help operate certain, or to help accomplish certain things. If not this year, I'm pretty sure we're going to be bringing one next year. You know, that opportunity will perhaps have a chance to address some of this, but nonetheless, the package does have its limits. The second thing, which is, again, the more critical thing, is the ability to help, you know, we'll receive some funding to help hire staff. And that, you know, you may recall, within the last six months, I believe, Little Rock received, you know, funding from the same approach.
Right.
For a number of firemen, and so we have, hopefully, have some optimism with regard to that.
Little Rock, I think Conway and Jonesboro have all received funding for that.
Alderman Robinson?
You'll get us a copy of that, the rendering?
Yes, ma'am. You bet you. I'll get both of you a copy of the plans. I'll contact Foster Taggart and get you a copy.
Okay.
Why don't you not only get them a copy, but let's sit down and be prepared to go over it with either of them individually or collectively?
Yes.
Obviously, collectively, you need to make sure our media knows about it.
Okay. Mayor, the only comment I'll make is, you know, in thinking about this, this station, you know, I realize it's an industrial area, and I realize that we're trying to build a leads building, but I guess when I visited with the architect one day, and I asked about the building, he indicated it was going to be a metal building, and I, you know, I have some very definite feelings about, about metal buildings being for our public use and being around on a long-term basis. And so, that is one of the reasons why I asked specifically about the elevations for that building. I'd like to see them too, as a matter of fact, if you don't mind, Chief.
I mean, every council member certainly is entitled to just call the chief, and I'm sure he'll schedule a set down with FOI in that.
I have a problem with metal buildings.
Yeah, I think they have the capability of sending that stuff to us electronically, so.
However, however you choose. We certainly want to share whatever information we have. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Where are we, Ms. Whitby?
A motion and a second, or pending?
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In Whicher?
Yes.
R-09-138, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution approving participation by the city of North Little Rock under the Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism's Outdoor Recreation Grant Program for improvements at Sherman Park.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any question, discussion? On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In Whicher?
Yes.
R-09-139, Alderman Robinson and White?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the city of North Little Rock to apply for funds available through the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Minority Health Youth Empowerment Grant Program.
This is some, ma'am, this is something that Alderman White and I are really happy about, and if we're able to get this grant, in which it's stated, it's no matching funds required, it would serve kids, the after-school program at Glenview, Sherman Park, and North Heights Recreation Centers. And we just hope that you all will vote yes on this, because this is something that is very much needed, okay?
Let's go ahead and get a motion before we start.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'm going to do a commercial here for this. I'm really excited about this opportunity. We've got very little time to make it happen, but it goes back a ways for me. Alderman Whicher gave me some information some months ago about childhood obesity, and I was really surprised how the municipal league is involved in that and has suggestions for how cities can touch that problem. And then, a little later, I had a report from Alderman Taylor and found out that Arkansas is the second, has the second highest number of obese children in the nation. It ties with Ohio for adults, but there were a lot of things that started to fall into place, and then we have developed the youth task force, which I see as an umbrella over a lot of things that are to come for our city, based on going to a few meetings. And then, I find out that the Parks Department has been, has developed something called a CATCH program, which is a program, that's a comprehensive program of nutrition and general health for children. So, a lot of pieces have fallen together, and then this grant came along, and Linda was very wise to draw it to our attention, and we're going for it, and we would really appreciate your support on it. There's just a lot of things that this will be a good thing for. Also, another aspect of what we're asking for in this grant is the accidental injuries, and I, another thing fell into place for me this week, or last week, rather, that I saw the, a newspaper article that was written that said, in two thousand and eight, one hundred and seventy-one people died in Arkansas in crashes in which a driver or a motorcycle rider was intoxicated beyond the legal limit. And that's another area that this grant is going to touch, along with some other things. So we've got a lot of issues that I think this is really relevant to, and I hope we have your support.
Yes.
I just wanted to say this before you did. We like free, no matching funds. That's usually your line, "We like free."
I don't think you'll have any debate there. Well, one of the things that's kind of interesting, and this expands it a bit, but I certainly support it, and I want to compliment, you know, Alderman Robinson, and certainly Alderman White for moving this forward. You know, I know one of the things the mayor of Oklahoma City did, and, you know, got some national recognition, I think for all the right reasons, he put Oklahoma City on a diet. And that was sort of a cute entree to an article, but I think we all recognize that obesity, you know, from childhood on through adult, you know, is one of a contributing set of factors that certainly, you know, degrades one's health, and adds to both medical and certainly, you know, variety of health issues. So it's good that we're moving forward, and maybe we're not doing enough.
One more area it does touch to is the green agenda with encouraging children to walk. I know there's a Walk to Do School Day in October for our schools and other, you know, riding bicycles. Don't mention that right now, but there's a lot of things, it just touches a lot of parts of our lives.
Amen. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In Whicher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance we classify as certain property located near and around 717 Brett Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R-1, C-2, and C-6 Conservation in Greenbelt Wetland to I-1, C-2, R-1, and Greenbelt Wetland classifications by amendment ordinance number 7697, other city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting amended land use plan for the subject property, post reading.
All right, let's take a second reading.
Move to suspend rules, place on second reading. Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Baggett?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
In Whicher?
Yes.
This is an ordinance we classify as certain property located near and around 717 Brett Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R-1, C-2, C-6 Conservation in Greenbelt Wetland to I-1, C-2, and R-1, in Greenbelt Wetland classifications by amendment ordinance number 7697, other city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, adopting amended land use plan
we'd sit down and do just a little bit more work on it, we'd probably assuade a lot of concerns and make it a more understandable document for everybody involved.
Okay, so you, we are holding it then, till we can have that discussion, is that correct?
I would like for Mr. Carter to go ahead and explain where we are right now, if you don't mind, because this is also pertaining to 60, which is coming up later, and I think if we explain it now, that'll also explain on that one and save some time, if you don't mind.
I'll be happy to, and if you'd like, I mean, I'll go ahead and pass some of these around, just in case you want to look at them, it'd be easier for me to explain it off of a chart, where you can kind of follow along and see where we're at, and I don't know if I can fold up a paper airplane and shoot them over there to you, but, thank you for your assistance.
While he's doing that, we're still trying to find a home for the cell phone. Does anyone here know Emily Barrow? Emily Barrow is trying to call this cell phone? No? Okay.
Well, just keep it down in your office, I'm sure somebody will come looking for it.
I'll go through this as quickly as I can, but it's just based on trying to make a chart of what the rules are and how they apply, as to what, as to the rules right now, and I am trying to incorporate the proposed amendments. So, the easiest way to do this is just to kind of start at the top and work actually from right to left, instead of left to right, it makes it easier to follow, at least the way I've explained others, right? It's a little odd, but just work with me, okay, because if you see up at the top, in all residential areas, we're talking about all residential areas, you can't park in sidewalks and trails, right, that's just a citywide rule, you can't park on sidewalks, you can't park on trails. You can park in your garage or your carport, you can park your vehicle there, you can park your recreational vehicle there, you can park your commercial vehicle there inside your garage or carport, and the same rule goes for your backyard, you can park any vehicles that you've got in your backyard. The general citywide rule is you can park any vehicle in the side yard, you can park your car, your truck, your passenger vehicle, commercial vehicle can be parked in the side yard, recreational vehicles can be parked in the side yard. The same goes true for your front yard, except there's a special rule about commercial vehicles, we passed a rule a while back that said if you've got a commercial vehicle and you're parking it in your front yard, it's got to be on a pad or some kind of proper parking surface, so it's got to be parked on something if you have a commercial vehicle. And then as far as street parking goes, that was also updated in our last code, where he said, you know, people can park their cars on the streets, but if you have recreational vehicles, boats, motorhomes, things of that nature, you can only park it on the street, that's the 72-hour rule, right, for loading and unloading, and you can only park commercial vehicles on the street for commercial purposes while they're conducting business to load and unload, other than that, they can't be parked on the street. Is everybody tracking with the general rules for the city, any question about that?
Just a question then, what, your definition of all vehicles that can be parked on the street, what does all mean?
That, that means everything except for recreational and commercial vehicles, as defined by the statute. Okay? So, now if we skip down to historic districts, and you can see, you know, you can track it across the same way, kind of, and there's still no parking on sidewalks or trails, you can park in your garage or your carport, you can park in your backyard, there's a new rule about the parking in the front yards and side yards that's restricted in historic districts, right, if you're going to park in your front or your side yard, it's got to be basically on a driveway, something that's going to link to the street, and that's the rule as it is today. In historic districts, you can still park on the street, right now there's no parking recreational, commercial vehicles on the street at all, so that's one of the things, you'll see I've got that highlighted in red, that's something that we need to talk about. One of the things for our restricted parking districts, we're saying, you know, with the proposed amendment, that it would be acceptable to park for up to 72 hours, we need to discuss whether or not that same kind of exception needs to be made in historic districts. Skipping down to restricted parking districts, you can see under rule number one, no parking on city or trails, yes, you can park in your garage or your carport, yes, you can park in your backyard, but the front and side yard's basically the same rule as it is in historic districts, you can park on a driveway, you can, on a proper parking surface, but you can't just park in your front or side yard if you're not on the driveway, that would not be permissible. The rules for parking on the street are basically the same as they are for all other places in the city, you can park a regular passenger vehicle on the street, you can't park recreational vehicles on the street, and you can't park commercial vehicles on the street. As far as the second rule goes for restricted parking, that pertains to the commercial and large recreational vehicles, and I think we had some comments about that earlier, and I think you quoted the rule precisely, as I say, you know, as it pertains to large recreational or commercial vehicles, there is no parking, of course, on sidewalks or trails. Right now, it doesn't really provide for parking in a garage or carport, and that's, once again, highlighted in red, because I don't know if that's the way that you intended that rule to be, and I want to be able to discuss that further. You could park a large recreational vehicle or commercial vehicle in your backyard, in a restricted parking district, that would be acceptable, but as far as parking on the street, in the front yard or in the side yard, that would not be acceptable, you couldn't park there except for those loading and unloading rules that pertain to the large recreational vehicles and also to the commercial vehicles. And I won't go through the painstaking detail on that rule 2B, because it's really not being proposed right now, and the proposed amendment's to remove it, so I'll go through it if you want me to, but it's probably just superfluous. And I see hands raised.
Alderman Robinson.
Well, you said something about historic districts, and I know Argenta, you know, that's a piece of legislation that I sponsored a couple of years ago, and the people down there were adamant about, you know, the recreation vehicles and commercial vehicles, so you're not looking at changing that, are you?
Really, Argenta has to be looked at separate, because that was the first animal that was created, and it was just kind of invented on its own, outside the statutory scheme, and I don't think anybody's intending to change the rules that apply to Argenta.
Okay.
As long as, as long as that one's working well, then, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, it's kind of that philosophy.
Well, I haven't heard any complaints, so.
Anyone else?
One of the things, I think where the confusion is coming, is when you say yard, when you say yard, we think of grass, but when you say yard, you're, are including the driveway, you're including everything from the front of the house to the street, is that correct?
Well, and that, that may be trying to lawyer a common term, you know, and that's not a good thing to do, but that's what we do anyway, and especially in our zoning ordinance, when we talk about your front yard, we're talking about the distance between the front of the primary structure, usually your house, the front of your house, to the street, that's your front yard. So, when we say there's no parking in the front yard except for a proper paved surface, you know, or proper parking surface, that means you can park on the driveway.
For automobile, for vehicles.
Right.
But no large RVs and no commercial vehicles, the way it stands right now.
Right, the way that it's worded, that you can't, if you adopt the second rule, right, under the restricted parking, so that's the rule that prohibits parking large recreational vehicles or commercial vehicles in your front yard, there's no exception there for proper paved surfaces. The only exception that would, that would apply, as proposed in 0958, is the exception for 72 hours to load or unload large recreational vehicles, and the exception for commercial vehicles when they're conducting business and loading and unloading.
Alderman Height.
Okay, under restricted parking rule 2A.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Brandis if I can use him for an example.
Okay.
And my question, if, with your permission, I'd like to use.
Yes, sir.
You as an example. Mr. Brandis is the owner of a large recreational vehicle, that he parks in his driveway from time to time, and I have had discussion with Mr. Brandis about that, and that, under our parking ordinance, he can, he can technically, he can lawfully park that motorhome, motor coach, in his driveway for really as long as he wishes, is that correct?
Correctly.
Under the current rules, yes. Now, if, are you talking about after a parking district's put in place?
If we, if we adopt the restricted parking area, our rule 2A.
Yes.
Will he be able to park his motor coach or his motorhome in his driveway for as long as he chooses?
He can park it there to load it and unload it.
Only?
Yes.
Okay, what about, okay, and so this only applies, so then if the parking district chooses to enforce that rule, the parking district's going to have to vote on whether or not to choose that rule, is that correct?
Right, because, I mean, part of what we're trying to, what we're talking about doing is amending the restricted parking district rules while someone is applying to become a restricted parking district, so I guess we're eating the soup while it's cooking.
Well, let me, let me ask you another way then, rule one and rule two are separate, and the parking district could choose either or both of those rules to enforce, correct?
Yes. Well, to say that they could choose either or both of those rules to enforce, they can choose either or both of those rules when they bring it to city council and apply and they, you know, ask for a restricted parking district to be created. What this council does with it from them, from there, is up to this council.
Okay, Alderman Gaines.
But Jason, that only affects, only affects parking districts, has nothing to do with anywhere else.
Yes.
Thank you. People out there on television sometimes, like me, don't understand that.
Right, that's, and that's kind of troublesome when people are channel surfing, too, you know, that could be troublesome.
I'm glad, I'm glad we clarified that.
Okay, any other questions, comments, you know, this is sort of helpful and confusing at the same time.
It is, it is, and that's where I would really like for us to take one more stab at trying to simplify this just a little bit more, and possibly come back with an amendment next time if the sponsors are acceptable to that.
Okay, that'll be, you're holding that legislation in?
Yes.
Okay, probably a wise move. Next item.
00959, Alderman Witcher.
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance, amendment ordinance number 7697, the zoning ordinance, establishing the acceptable level of light output of electronic changeable copy signs, establishing the method of measuring the light output of electronic changeable copy signs. First reading.
Please suspend rules and place it on a second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amendment ordinance number 7697, the zoning ordinance, establishing the acceptable level of light output of electronic changeable copy signs, establishing the method of measuring the light output of electronic changeable copy signs. Second reading.
Please suspend rules and place it on its third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amendment ordinance number 7697, the zoning ordinance, establishing the acceptable level of light output of electronic changeable copy signs, establishing the method of measuring the light output of electronic changeable copy signs. Third and final reading.
My question, my question is this, we held the moratorium ordinance, but in the, in the, in the moratorium ordinance, it refers to that we need, that the city needs some time to determine what's right and what's not right as far as electronic changeable copy signs. My question is, how do we know that this ordinance that deals with brightness is right or wrong?
Well, it's right if you adopt it and it becomes law, it's wrong if you don't, and then there wasn't to worry about.
You said you wanted, you said you wanted to study, you wanted to study what other cities are doing, what, you know, and all the different legislation and legal action that's being concerned about electronic changeable copy signs, and then you come up with a rule on brightness.
Well, maybe it's not as controversial as the other one, I don't know, Alderman, I mean, right now, we're in front of, you know, we're going to get another motion for adoption, we've read it the required times, you know, so it's up to this council whether it feels like it wants to move forward or not, Alderman Ross.
Can I?
Go ahead, Ms. Ross.
I know this, this is Alderman Witcher's, but I just wanted to, this is concerning everything that's already in place. The moratorium is, we don't know what's coming, we don't know what's in the future, and to prevent anything else, and this is on the recommendation of planning for what we have right now today, this is not looking at tomorrow.
And I think it's some clarification of what, and perhaps a better way to, we'll say, address what is our, what we think might be our intent, so Alderman Witcher don't want to ask questions for you, but I'll answer questions for you, but it's your legislation.
You're doing good, Mayor. Would you like to hear an explanation from Mr. Voels?
Well, I'd like, I was going to ask if Mr. Voels would like to make comment.
Mayor, would you?
And then I've got another question of Mr. Voels and Mr. Carter.
On this?
Concerning this.
Yes, sir. As we explained, we went out and did a test on some of these signs, and working with the industry, it was their recommendation, you need to turn these down about 25% of brightness at dark, at night, or there, it's just the glare is intense, so it's a reasonable measure. The way to measure that, we found, was to step back a certain distance with a light meter and see how much brightness by stepping the sign down, and the sign companies helped us with that exercise. So, we came up with that, going with the national recommended standard, but I do encourage you to adopt it, because right now, I'm not sure we have one, so, you know, we do need to keep safety in the forefront, and that was the intent of this.
Okay, so what, my question of you, and then my question of Mr. Carter, then, this ordinance, was it thought of after they discussed the moratorium or before the moratorium?
It was well before.
Same time.
It was in the.
Same time?
But they're separate.
It was in the same meeting.
Okay, then my question of Mr. Carter is, how does this affect the signs that are in present in place in the city of Northern Rock? And I'm going to use, and I talked to Mr. Wiley this afternoon at Discount Tire, and he said that I could use him as an example. He's turning his sign off at night to the wee hours of the morning, and he's also dimmed his sign during the day, and does his sign comply with this?
We'd have to send somebody out to check it, to see if it complies, but one of the things, like Mr. Voels said, and I talked to Sean over in planning, and those guys did a lot of work to pull some national standards, and then to go out and experiment with their light meter to see how this works with ambient light, to make sure, can you still see the sign? The owners of the signs are still happy at these light levels, they don't appear to be intrusive, it seems like a really good balance, and our experiments matched up with what the national standards were saying, and that's why we felt like it was a good light standard. So, it would apply, yes, to existing signs, because that's a reasonable standard for existing signs, and we would use that as a guideline in going forward.
So, the existing signs then probably are fine in their, in their current settings?
They probably are, but if they're not, I mean, the best thing they can do is just call us, and we'll go out there and put the light meter down and see where they're at, and kind of help them get their sign set, that's what we've been doing with, with the existing signs that are in the city, and it's, it's worked very cooperatively and with no problem.
Upon adoption of this, I do not believe we'll be sending the light police out, you know, there might be some complaints, and we'll probably be complaint-driven if that's the case, and then we certainly would work with the, you know, with the business and trying to, you know, trying to be reasonable in terms of this legislation should it be adopted.
Most of the sign, or the sign owners, they don't have light meters, they don't, you know, sit there and measure it out, and they're, I think they're appreciative when we'll go out there and help them get the thing set.
Probably going to be very few citizens in the city of Northern Rock that drive up and down the major thoroughfares that these signs are located on are going to have a light meter also, but we're going to get calls from them, and they're going to say that somebody's sign is too bright, and we have to send out the light police, and like the mayor referred to, and check them out.
Mayor, before, before I go, or ask for the third reading, you know, as we deal with changeable copy signs, we're going to end up, in my opinion, and I might be wrong, having a series, or adopting a series of regulations that will, at some point in time, formulate the foundation for our, our sign management in the city. And so, this, this is step one, in that, in the absence of any guidance, we are going to provide guidance, which are national standards by the national sign board industry. And so, we are following those recommendations, and we'll see how they work. If they don't work, we'll go back and work on them again. So, move to suspend rules and place it on its third reading.
I think it's already been suspended, I think we're just ready for adopt on third and final.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
On the motion to adopt on third and final.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines. Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines. Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance 0960, Alderman Ross.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance established in the Lake Wood Restricted Parking District. First reading.
I want to hold this next time for, also for another public hearing to make sure, and if anybody has any questions, to be sure and let us know, want to make sure that we all get on the same page. I understand it, I want to make sure that everyone else understands that. If anybody has any concerns about the RVs, the large RVs, one thing I want to make clear, a large RV is anything over 25 feet or eight feet high, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney.
You're right.
A commercial vehicle is any vehicle that requires a CDL license to drive, plain and simple, that's all it is, correct?
All right, well, it's, any construction vehicle, you know, we got, we've got some descriptions where it's, I think, big construction-type vehicles, the catch-all is the CDL.
CDL, okay.
And then it's the.
And then we have all, all right, any.
Any, any commercial vehicle that's been altered, right, so you can't.
Nothing's plain and simple, nothing's simple evidently, but.
That's a commercial vehicle. Okay.
You'll know it if you see it.
I'll look for a public hearing.
Next item.
Ordinance 0961, Alderman Taylor.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance allowing special use for a daycare center in R3 zone for certain real property located at 4509 Rogers in the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
Move to suspend the rules, place it on a second reading.
Let's see if we can get the vote, Mr. Alderman Robinson, then I'll recognize you. On the motion, suspend the rules?
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Gaines. Baggett.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Go ahead and read it, and then I'll recognize Alderman Robinson.
This is an ordinance allowing special use for a daycare center in a R3 zone for certain real property located at 4509 Rogers in the city of Northern Rock, Arkansas. Second reading.
I have two questions. My first question is the hour of operation, and the second[1599.81]